Good evening and welcome back for folks that weren't watching at 5:45. We did open the meeting in open session and then went into executive session. It's stated on the agenda and as was moved as a motion, we're now moving back into open session for the next three items on the agenda. So the first item slated for 6:30, and apologies for being a little bit behind as the interviews of respondents to the request for proposals for 231 Turnpike Road. One reminder I do as stated on our agenda is that this meeting will be, is being recorded by Westboro TV and broadcast at this time. So we just want to note that. We did state that earlier, but just wanted to restate that for folks in attendance or watching on Westboro TV. So to the respondents, thank you very much for being here. I think as we post in the agenda, our plan for this evening is to go in order, how we put it on the agenda, and just so folks know, we put it on the agenda in alphabetical order. So there's no preference besides alphabetical order. We figured that was the easiest way to do it. So our plan and how we have scheduled, I think as was communicated, is planning roughly 30 minutes, looking for a presentation upfront, just more clarity for us, perhaps some clarifying questions from the board if there are any. And then there is a couple of questions that members have or may want to ask. Just also to note that we do have one member that is attending remotely, select board member Welch, who was on the screen before, but so there are, all five are in attendance, one via remote means, and the other four of us here in person. So is anything else on the board before I call Ferris Development up? Okay. If not, if I could, representatives from Ferris Development Group to come forward. For each group, just to introduce yourselves so we can get that in our minutes. And thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is David.
Excuse me. If you can raise the microphones so that we can hear you and the people at home watching.
Is that, is that a little bit better?
That is perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for having us here this evening. My name is David Ferris. I'm the CEO of Ferris Development. We're based in Southborough, Mass, and have had the pleasure and distinction of working with your community for almost a dozen years in different capacities locally with approximately a half a million square feet of commercial space represented through three principal buildings, one Research Drive being the flagship building at the apex of 405 and Route 9, the Silver Building, and four Technology Drive and eight Technology Drive. In that capacity, we've had the benefit of working with a lot of the different town divisions, and we've had the pleasure of working with your building inspector, Board of Health, and everybody from Jim and others, and it's been a complete pleasure. So at the onset, we'd like to thank you for the spirit of partnership regardless of where this falls. We still love working in the community and appreciate being a part of it. And welcome talking totally open and transparent with any questions you have anywhere along the presentation and be happy to stop and answer questions. Our track record in the community has been pretty successful with what I would call the S&amp;P 100 Blue Chip Best of Breed Companies in America, in large part due to the partnership with, with Westboro where we've been able to bring flagship companies like Genzyme, Accenture, Marvell Corporation, Eversource, recently Park Place Technology in the middle of the pandemic. Many of these tenants are 80 to 150,000 square feet of space with long durations and commitments of capital to your community. And the net benefit to the community has been the buildings in which they've occupied that have been owned by Ferris Development have really substantially appreciated in value from the time that we've purchased them. And I think if you spoke with some of the ground personnel at administrative level, what you would hear from a reputational standpoint with the buildings that we manage is we've really brought them up to modern kind of use in the office capacity. I think that's tax benefit to the community in terms of increased assessed valuations. A lot of that's driven by just net operating income, et cetera. I think why we're here tonight is we see a very big opportunity that could parallel what we've been able to do in the commercial sector with this commercial site. I think that really, really dovetails very nicely with your master plan and your community feedback that you've already gotten. And I think what we're trying to do is sort of flip the narrative of where we've been really, really successful, which is this large blue chip kind of approach to companies and really shifting to post-pandemic life and world. And by that, I mean, we're in the process now of beginning a new venture that we'll call Beehive, and you'll see the presentation before you and we'll go through it, where we're really empowering entrepreneurs and young small businesses that are breakaways from the large corporate America. And what we're doing is we're repurposing office buildings and other commercial buildings to create a hive or a community or cluster of small businesses that can serve the community. We're building the first flagship site right now in Southborough where we're repurposing a three-story office building, reinforcing floor loads and capacities. We have a strong expertise in construction. We own a sister company called Expedited Construction. We built millions and refitted millions of square feet for tenants. We tend to perform all our own build-out work in the pandemic. Your community was super helpful along with Lieutenant Governor in facilitating a large corporate blue chip tenant Park Place Technology that we built a data center in one Research Drive in record time thanks to the feedback and work with the building inspector locally and Karen and National Grid that all partnered together to dig from Route 9 at both ends and get this data center turned on for video conferencing for all the major hospitals in Boston. So there's a lot of cool things that happen in your community, in our buildings currently. I think what we, why we're here tonight is I think we could take what's been a stale asset in a relatively sleepy section of Westboro, we could bring it vibrancy again. And I think we could do that by changing the use of the building and really repurposing it to really facilitate an environment where entrepreneurs that are electricians, plumbers, you know, water remediation companies, you name it, any small business can operate locally from this location, and it could really be a great asset to the community where, if you think about where the, where the world has gone in the last 20 years, we've gone from a little company called Amazon that back when I was a young investment guy, I sold shares in the IPO when they were just selling books to clients. And, you know, then, then they get into all these other, you know, devices, you know, we basically get to a Web 1.0 world where, you know, the white, it's whitehouse.gov and that's kind of like the use of the internet, that it goes to buying and selling books to, you know, ride sharing and, you know, Web 3.0 where we are now where it's all about services and convenience of life and quality of life for individuals, not only in the workplace, but how they live and work. And the internet's a tool that empowers it. So what Beehive is really all about is about a marriage of both physical space and social presence online. And what we're really trying to do is create a resource for people in the local proximity to this hive, and we'll loosely describe the key coordinator as the queen bee, the woman that will run that, will make that center as friendly as a Starbucks in the morning for someone that wants to come in and get a quote from three or four local painters in their community that are based in that building. So we would expect something south of 100 tenants, north of 50, that have bearing size in the building, anywhere from a couple hundred square feet to, to a couple of thousand square feet. But at the crux of what we're doing that's different and that really kind of capitalizes on this post-pandemic world that we're in right now is we're creating what we would call a WeWork for the trades. And so what that WeWork concept really was built around is shared amenities, shared printers, shared conference rooms. What we're really trying to do is create a place where entrepreneurs, small businesses that we just talked about can bring their level of professionalism up. The world's changed, so the opportunity for someone to work out of their garage might not exist for that new small business, that electrician that's leaving a conglomerate of Worcester and deciding to start his own electrical supply house and needs a place to keep his truck, and the Avalon community that he's renting his apartment at won't let a numbered or named vehicle park there overnight. So, you know, these people need a place to facilitate their business, store their tools and materials, and they need a place that they can, with a simple touch of an app, have their tools delivered in the morning to a loading bay on a Monday morning to conduct their business for the week. And the same is true in the reverse where we're in a very depersonalized world in kind of Web 2.0 where, you know, it's basically a series of reviews and you pick somebody. This is an opportunity for people to go down in their local community, meet with the provider that's actually going to paint their house, the person that's going to clean their gutters, the person that's going to provide a small service to their community. So we're trying to build and facilitate both a social networking capacity that marriages the real estate with the, with the physical need for space. I think the big thing that I would take away from where we are tonight with the different presentation sets and opportunities that the community has, I think that when you look at our proposal and you look at, and I didn't want to kind of bore you with page by page, you guys are all smart and can look at this after and digest it, but the net of it is, is we're talking about building this in a very responsible LEED-certified way where there'll be significant recapture of energy through solar canopies. I think just the gasoline component that we would save, the carbon footprint would be over 26,000 gallons a year with the proposed solar savings. I think the part in terms of the difficult position that you're in is weighing top dollar price versus burden on the water sewer in septic, you know, system or what our treatment plant for the community. And I think where we're at as a company is we're reducing the total water and sewer demand on the community. I think we're, we're a proven track record in terms of building value for the community, in terms of tax assessment and value back to the taxpayers, in terms of helping fund the ongoing responsibilities of the community without putting an undue draw on the services like the school system and the long-term commitments that, you know, added housing and things like that tend to bring to a community. So I think, you know, this could be a very, very nice win-win partnership. I think in terms of your master plan and thinking about that, if you'd want to go forward a page, that sort of describes, first of all, Beehive and the idea that it's a colony of workers and that it'll provide some storage capacity and some social media presence for these business owners in your community. And if you go forward another slide, this is the major site plan. I think the cool thing about this plan is, you know, a lot of the wet area, we would be able to easement donate back to the community and it would be a permanent resource. And where you have that piece of the wet area facing the Route 9 visibility side, I think that's a benefit to the community and it, it's an easy give for anybody who's before you this evening, I think. And I think that our proposal, I think that in terms of substantive ability to take on risk, you know, we're very comfortable in underwriting risk and, you know, I have my general counsel and chief operating officer, Brian Charval, with me tonight. We've reviewed this pretty extensively in terms of the willingness to, but this isn't our first time buying a tax titled property. We've done it previously. We're happy to write the check in October and give the community the benefit of that money earlier rather than later. We don't need a ton of permitting contingencies. We need basic permitting. We're reusing the existing envelope of the building. We're not adding buildings. We're not adding more surface area, and we're putting in a lot of green initiatives. And frankly, a lot of those, we're already doing it in our other buildings in your community, things like LED lighting and whatnot. I think that the disturbance for the existing site would be very minimal, and I think the same would be true for the community around cars and traffic and things like that. If you go forward the next slide, this is the site plan, that yellow highlighted area is the proposed donation to the community. And if you go forward one more step, these are the areas, just as a preliminary sort of solar design, that we could put in the existing infrastructure, which would provide covered parking as well for vehicles. But, you know, that's a pretty substantive array that would produce almost 300-plus-thousand kilowatts of solar power. If you go forward one more slide, this gives you some numbers around the plan in terms of what it really means to the community and the savings to the environment and the benefit. And I think all of this comes ironically at a reduced burden to the community in terms of water and septic treatment plant, et cetera. If you go forward one more slide, this just gives some more of the community benefits. And if we go forward one more, I kind of wish I had my eyeglasses on at this point, but the, we just think that if you're going to come into any community, if you're a known entity, we are, we've worked with you before, you know we're going to be responsible, but, you know, adherence to really what your community feedback's been, there's a reason there's a master plan. Those master plans take a lot of people, tremendous time, hours, energy. There's a lot of community feedback, and I think, you know, that's where this proposal shines the most because it really mirrors what the community has asked for with this site even specifically. And if you go forward a little bit more, this just talks about the Climate Action Plan, which you can read better from, than me from this distance. And if we go forward, that's the summary. So with that, I don't want to overburden the group and open it up to questions.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Open up the board for any questions, clarifications. Can I start with Patrick? Sure. Patrick.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
All right. So first of all, thank you very much for your proposal and presenting tonight. I appreciate the additional information. I also sit on our Sustainable Westboro Committee, so my questions will be focused primarily around or exclusively around sustainable topics. So just a little bit of background here, per the 2021 CAP Climate Action Plan for Westboro, Westboro produced 533 million pounds of CO2 emissions, 44% of which was produced by commercial, industrial, and manufacturing. Therefore, as the CAP states, there's an effective, community-wide response by residents, businesses, and municipalities necessary to meet the climate change goals of this town and the state. While I'm excited to see the data and the information around the solar panels, will Ferris look to leverage additional state-specialized energy code, which is inclusive of heat pumps, EV stations, and other means?
Yes. The answer to that is yes, and it's already happening at our other sister sites in your community. So, you know, I would say two months ago, we signed off on charging sites at all of our properties in Westboro, our entire portfolio frankly, you know, just to give the group some basis of understanding how attractive that is both for the community and for the owners of these assets, you know, commercial assets right now. It's almost a no-brainer to put these charging stations in. The script has been completely flipped, so the 100,000 that we just allocated last month for that, if we looked at that proposal three years ago, we would have paid 80% of the cost, 80,000, and now it's exactly reversed where we will pay 20 and it's 80,000 of subsidized rebate. So those are very, very easy, gives the community, and frankly, they make a tremendous amount of sense from the standpoint of the world is going in that direction and you're fighting change to not put those in. So the answer on that question is yes, we are planning on putting in charging stations in this location. The second question around the heat pumps is a very good one, and we deal with this issue on a very, very regular basis in the development company, which is to say that we consult with three to four specialized companies that work on finding the most optimal heat pumps. We have some buildings that are exclusive or rotating to exclusive electric supply, and the code's heading that way anyway at the residential level sooner than the commercial, but the commercial will get there too. We're looking at this, you know, we put enough time in this to study it, understand it, evaluate the risks to be able to go forward and operate from this location, but if we get the go-forward from this committee to purchase the asset, we would, we would immediately conduct a study for things like geothermal for heat, but the heat pump piece is an absolute no-brainer for all the assets that we already own. We're doing that. And frankly, if you look at most of the assets that are owned in your community, they're all built in this kind of stratospheric growth phase of when, you know, Wang was, you know, out here and Digital Equipment Corporation was, you know, the largest real estate taxpayer in the state. So a lot of these assets, is my point, are very dated internally, and they're ripe for these heat pump upgrades and system upgrades. And the way some of this new legislation, even prior to it, Mass is one of the, the very, very aggressive states in terms of both charging policyholders, but also sending that money back. So every building that we own, we've already done LED lighting upgrades. That's another one where in the last couple of years, it's been almost a no-brainer. It's 90 cents of the dollar to replace all of that. Same thing with like, energy management systems exist in all our buildings. And, you know, we're, we're a very, very responsible company around energy to the point where PPT and 80,000 Park Place Technology that we built in the pandemic, we repurposed dated office space in one research and built them a data center, and we knew they were going to draw considerable power. And we're working them, with them right now collaboratively to look at how to power their data center with solar at one research because they're spent, they're using 2.3 million kilowatts of electrical power at 17 cents. And we hammered on them because we hedged all of one research power about two years ago for five years under the belief that energy prices would increase from six or seven cents a kilowatt, and it did. And so that's been a net benefit to our, to our tenants in the building, but we asked them because we had brought 3,000 amps of additional power into that building, which to give you an idea, a building one research aside, one of the biggest buildings outside of Boston that exists is in your community, and it's, it's really a flagship building. And we're working with one of the most prestigious entities in the Metro West right now to look at backfilling the last 100,000 square feet. That's still confidential, but would be a major, major win for your community. And I think, I think they're, they're on their fourth tour and they're probably coming. But to answer the question, that building's about 300,000 square feet, uses 3,000 amps of electrical power, just that 11,000 square foot data center is using the same 3,000 amps. So we're very, very conscious of power and the costs that it takes to generate it and always looking to optimize it for tenants and for ourselves, which is why, you know, we hedged it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Follow-up question, which kind of touches on that as well. Sorry, was there another question around that?
No, but I was just going back to you for your next question, Patrick.
Okay. So follow-up, and you kind of touched on it a little bit, is Sustainable Westboro anticipates that green energy choices are more cost-effective than traditional energy plans, as you also stated. In good faith, would Ferris strive to purchase green energy via Westboro Power Choice?
We absolutely would. Yep.
Okay. And then my final question is, would Ferris be a partner in lobbying our state legislature to improve the Milk Street underpass and bridge to safe and effective green transportation as a significant majority of our community is located south of Route 9?
Yeah, I would, I would just want to know the issues before I signed on to it, but it sounds if it's beneficial to green, then I would, obviously. Yeah. And we do that, but I would just, I would just sort of side, sidecar that question with the answer that regardless of what happens with this particular building, we're already your partner in the community, so any of those issues that come up that we can be a partner with the community, even if, you know, you have to go with the higher price because, you know, the town needs the cash today versus the long-term vision for the community, we're still going to be your partner. So I would just say, just reach out to me directly and we would be happy to make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shall we?
Thank you so much for your presentation. Have you calculated the offset on town services?
We haven't done the, like, a full study on that just yet, except to know that the, we, one of the young professionals in the company kind of looked at headcount for movie theater and average demand draw, and she's not here tonight, but she did look at that and said, wow, this is going to be a huge win for Westboro. I'm not sure I quantify that.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Sean, do you have another question?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
That's okay. So I do understand that there's another Beehive, sort of your first launch in Southborough, which is just up the road. So help us to understand sort of the ability to fill Westboro, this location.
The demand is, is over the top for this right now. So, you know, if you look at an example in, even in, in Westboro where they put up, you know, what I would call dated-looking old kind of service-oriented buildings, but they're new, you know, those leased before they were, they came out of the ground at, you know, the Southwest cutoff. But this, this is really a very, very high demand right now, so there's not, if you think about it, and you're, you're an electrician, you're a plumber, and you want to like have a webpage, you know, you got to go out and figure that out. You want to have Wi-Fi, you got to figure, you got to get an IT person, you want to have an email address, you got to get an IT person, you want to have an app that your customer, you can bill through. You need a physical place to meet with your customer and conduct business. This is really a turnkey solution for what I call breakaway entrepreneurs that want to have a professionalized business rather than a cellphone number and a truck that they show up at your front yard to give you a quote on, on, on something that you need done at your house or business. So the demand in filling this will not be the issue, that there's very, very strong demand already in the market, and there's not enough of the type, of this type of product just without the basics, without the shared amenities that we plan to bring with the center. So it's kind of like, the old way of doing it is put up a tin building, put a couple of garage bays, and, you know, they're god-awful ugly, and, you know, that's kind of where the truck rolls into at the end of the night and the guys unload the truck. I mean, it's literally like a place of shelter. This is really a community experience where there's a beautiful lobby where a very, you know, smart woman who's effectively the queen bee and knows all of the, you know, tenants in the building will help you navigate to how to get your project quoted effectively and help be your partner at getting your problem solved. And so, you know, the lobby will feel a lot like a Starbucks where you can sit down, you can connect to Wi-Fi, and you could schedule meetings in glass conference rooms, you know, to meet with your prospective customer, and they can have a professionalism that they wouldn't otherwise have operating a van with a cellphone number.
Thank you.
One sec.
For now.
Okay. Sean?
No, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation.
Thanks for having us tonight. Appreciate it.
Just a couple more.
Sure.
So I just had one, I mean, I think, I'm assuming you were, we offered the site visit, I'm assuming you, someone from your...
Yep. I've been to that movie theater with my wife about 250 times, and my little daughter, you know, who's sitting behind me watching, just to get an idea, she's going to college next year, you know.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. She, she probably wasn't even alive when my wife and I started going to that movie theater, so we know it well. And, you know, just, just so the committee and group has an idea of the commitment to the idea and what we're building, you know, we, I always refer to our companies as a three-legged stool where we had Ferris Development, the holding company that owns, you know, million, 2 million square feet of commercial real estate, and then the construction company and investment company that, you know, managed around numbers of billion in assets under management, you know. I sold that in December and June of this year in large part to pursue this Beehive idea. These are the beta sites that we're rolling out the, the technology along with the tenancy, and we intend to eventually take institutional capital. We're well-funded to build, you know, a dozen, two dozen of these sites to show the community, to show the investment community that it's a viable, very, very profitable endeavor. And, and so we're very excited about it.
Okay. Just to follow my question, so you, knowing what it was like before, but because of the fact that it's been vacant, you've seen it.
Yeah.
You know, no concerns.
None.
You talk about not having to change some of the stuff.
Yeah, no, we, I mean, interior-wise, it'd be likely in almost entirely full gut, and we get all that. And if you, I mean, if you saw the building we just did, which, this one, you know, with no disrespect, we could do standing in our head, you know, because of a lot of things. This is like the easiest type of construction that a firm like ours would undertake, but to give you some perspective, I stopped, you know, I had videos on my phone earlier today, I stopped at the Southborough site where, you know, was this dilapidated eight-year vacant three-story office building space, and, you know, old computers on the desk, you know, we went in there in 30 days, gutted the entire space down to the core of girders where it says, something iron works, like, anyway, it's a Vermont Iron Mill that produced the steel that's now closed, you know, it's no surprise. But, so, so the answer to the question is yeah, we'd be very comfortable gutting it. But in that building, we're confronted and challenged with a whole bunch of other issues going multi-level in terms of floor load capacities that were designed for offices at 50 pounds a square foot, where we're building this to 125 pounds a square foot. So they're in there today welding additional, you know, steel that doesn't impact the floor floor use. And so, so the answer to this question is this would be a very easy assignment for us. is this would be a very easy assignment for us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
About how much of the space will be office use and how much will be warehouse?
Yeah, I, I would say it would probably be in the city guesstimate based on the floor planning, but I would say probably eighty, twenty, eighty, eighty percent would be actual tenant space and twenty percent to twenty-five percent would be common area, amenities, lobby, glass conference rooms, shared printing areas, shared cafe where people could get coffees when they're meeting with their prospective, you know, tradesperson.
Okay, so the tenant space would be the warehouse.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, they would each have their own siloed off piece.
Okay.
Yep.
But common loading dock?
Yeah, common loading dock, common lobby, a lot like, it would look and feel a lot like an office building when you walk in and, you know, the, you know, it'd be interesting, you know, just, just for the group's knowledge, you know, we, in the pandemic, bought a couple of buildings in Seltro unrelated to the one that I just discussed. Where we took these buildings that were vacant for five, eight years and gutted them, but one of them was really particularly ugly that we bought. And if you walk in it, we just told the architects, we want this to look and feel exactly like a WeWork office. And when you walk in that thing, it's at one twenty Turnpike, it's just this really cool vibe, very hip, like modern, you know. If you want to be successful in business, you got to really cater to people, I think, that, you know, that are engaged, motivated by the space and where they're going every day. And that's, this, this, this design and concept is radically different than kind of the old kind of view of warehouse or self storage or something like that.
And then a final question, on your, on the plot diagram you had with your solar canopy.
Yeah.
All of the parking in front of the strip mall is part of your prop, you know, is part of this property.
It's, it's shared, yeah. Yeah, it's shared with that existing tenancy.
Well, shared use, but it's part of.
This property, correct.
I was just wondering if this is significant to the yellow shading?
Uh, no, just that that's like a, the, that's a shared section by, by design in the plan, in the original deed or covenants of the property. I got Brian it's that specifically.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Can I ask a clarified question? So you mentioned a lot about trades. Is there an element of this or do you see opportunity for like arts card, um, um, you know, artisan type use of these spaces?
Yeah, we, we, if, if they're a small business and they're opening a small art studio or something like that, we'd welcome them like anybody else, absolutely. So the model really gets turbocharged when there are trades that are doing it for profit. But, you know, we're, it's, it, the economics that we've underwritten this in terms of how we're, we're going to build it, it'll be very, very successful just on tenancy. Yep.
Perfect.
Ian?
Yes.
Just one quick question, if I may?
Sure.
Can you describe, and I apologize if you've mentioned this before, I had a little difficulty hearing part of the presentation, but can you describe what your anticipation is in regards to commercial vehicle traffic in, into and out of that location?
You know, I think that the tenancy would probably be, you know, round numbers, fifty to a hundred businesses in this hive at any given time, depending on the size and the demand. But I think that given there's the secondary egress, egress off the side, I don't, I don't see it being any different than, or I, I, I would see it being a lot less than a normal night at the movies, that's for sure. But the other part of it is, part of the, why we're using, we're trying to help marry technology with this site is to really empower trades and, and people to think differently and more efficiently with how they work and conduct their business. So one of the app's functionalities will be for them to schedule what we call the tool drop. And the tool drop will be certain bins and boxes that are labeled in their, their section of space. And they can have it delivered on Monday morning at six forty-four in the morning and it'll be waiting on the loading bay and they'll pick it up. And then on Friday at four oh one, they can drop it and it'll all be put away and stored neatly in their space. So it's, it's all about empowering efficiency for both their need to come back, but it is driven around various points in the day where it's going to really come down to what the community need is in terms of individuals who want to meet with their trades personnel at a designated location to meet with three or four. So that, that facilitator or what we call queen bee of that hive will be a person that will set up, you know, in conference room one, two, and three, an opportunity for three different painters for them to bid on work, you know, doing a paint job on their home or a gutter replacement or roof replacement or what, what have you.
Thank you.
You all set, Patrick?
Yep, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Lax Media Mass LLC. Welcome. Yeah, very good.
Yep.
So this is Jagan Gomagal. I'm one of the co-founder for the Apple Cinemas as well as, which is the DBA symbol for the Lax Media.
I'm Shiva. Good evening, everybody. And definitely happy to be inside while it's raining day. I'm one of the co-founders as well. And Lax Media is a company that acquires property and.
If you could just make sure you're talking into the microphone.
I know, right? Let me try that. Sorry. So Lax Media is a parent company that acquires properties and Apple Cinemas is a child company that runs the place. So today we are here to bring back what was originally supposed to be there, without any further ado. We'll go over a couple of our slides, explain what we are planning to do, what, what we have done so far and what we are planning to do and how we are going to be working with the town on the green initiatives and things like that. So the company we founded around twenty ten, so we are on, we have close to twelve plus years of experience. We started our first theater in Massachusetts in Cambridge. So that's our first theater. We, we understood the crowd. We understood the community. We understood what was needed. And we took a theater that was losing close to a million dollar and we converted into a place that was making profit. So this was possible only because we understood what the community, what the town folks wanted, what everybody wanted. So any, any theater, any locations, we take it, we actually make it a state of art theater. We are one of the first companies to bring in recliners in Massachusetts. So we are proud of that. We are very few, apart from corporate AMC and other things, we are one of the first people to bring in the recliners and other modern facilities into the theater. So these are some of our locations, just for a quick view. We are grown pretty fast. We have grown pretty much during, even during the pandemic because we exactly understood how to keep our business afloat and how to make it profitable. So during pandemic also, we have acquired four to five locations and we have renovated them. This, this is one of the locations we renovated. This is my slide. This is one of our locations we renovated during the pandemic and that's how Westboro Theater will be. So what we are planning in Westboro is we will be putting, we'll be completely refurbishing the theater without demolishing the existing building, without causing a huge environmental damage to it. We'll, we'll be reusing almost seventy percent of the building exactly the way it is. We'll only be, you know, we have some mold issues there. We have some HVAC issues there, which is, which is kind of a good and bad. What we are planning to do is we will re, repurpose the HVACs and everything with the state of art, energy efficient and new HVACs. And we'll be adding roofs and the roofs will have solar panels as well, which will generate a lot of electricity that we need for our theater. So that is the plan. And this will also allow us to redo the walls and things with, with the more heat efficiency, energy efficiency items. So that is the plan for the movie theater that we are planning to bring in. Now, why, why, why it should be a movie theater? Like, you know, in the last two years, one thing that we learned is we have become antisocial. We, we, we try to make, keep sure, you know, distance from each other. We, we, we were deprived from our community, our friends, our families and everybody. We have to talk to them over phone or whatever, Zoom call and everything. It has become like a working from home or working from, you know, working from home and talking to relatives, friends, everything became one way, just through the phone. So we need really some place where everybody can come and, you know, spend time together, you know, focus, leave their stress, stressful work or, you know, whatever they are doing outside. This is the place where they enjoy. They, they just forget about everything. So we are not only bringing movie theater, we are actually bringing in church, we are bringing in summer camp, we are bringing in day, day camp, even, even a Starbucks, even we, we, our plan is to create an open area where they can, even if they don't want to watch a movie, they can just come have a coffee and then, you know, chat with their friends and families and then they can go back. So, and our, our theaters have served as schools sometimes. So they conduct classes, they conduct all kind of, you know, religious and social activities in the place. So this brings back the community. This is exactly what we, we are looking to bring back, which, which was deprived from this place for a long time. So Jagan will continue with the green initiatives, how we are, what, what green initiatives we are going to bring in.
Do you want to quickly cover this one?
Yeah, just, just to quickly cover what we'll have is it'll, it'll, our theaters will not be any different than AMC or Regal. We'll have a really a large format screen with state of art sound systems and projectors and every, every one of the screens will have luxury recliners. And, you know, the food will be served inside the auditorium. We'll have a community bar, the bar, there will be a bar hours. And that's, that's the idea for this place. So thanks to previous gentleman, he said two fifty to three hundred times he went to the theater. He can go more now to the same place without any problem. That is exactly going to be what it is. So.
Yeah, and one of the key benefits, right? So we are looking best on the previous attendance in the range of three hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred thousand people coming to the theater. So based on the industries, data and standard, they spend, like, when people come to a theater, they spend double the amount of time in the nearby business. They go to the restaurants, they stop at the shopping places. Then we bring some unique movies, not only for the Westboro town people, they're around the people, like from Framingham. If I bring a Bollywood movie, there, there is no other places nearby that shows them. The people from the nearby cities come here as well. So that's a big economic boost, not only for this one and also to the nearby business. So if I bring four million, I'm really indirectly bringing eight million revenue to the nearby business. So our tentative timeline is initial two months, we'll, we'll be spending on the design and the permit. We are very quick in our renovation plans, so we can finish the construction and walk on for public within the six months, given the state of the building as it is. So we are very confident that we can pull that through. Okay, so Sustainable Westboro, right? So I think we'll hit some specific goals that what we look to achieve in terms of clean energy sourced electricity. The first and most easiest thing for us is to sign up for a renewable energy supplier. So if Westboro brings one, definitely we will participate. Otherwise, we will, we, we use our electric suppliers in other places too. So who supply the renewable resources so we can add them as well. We definitely will participate in the smart program and give space for the solar panels or whatever partnership the town want to do, or even we convert, we put the solar panels on the roof so that can, so the building can be self sufficient in terms of its energy needs. We will work closely with the town. It'll be very transparent for any tracking that you want to do and report as part of your climate action plan. In terms of building electrification, we will, as Shiva highlighted earlier, we'll buy the high energy HVACs, refrigeration units, all the things that we are going to replace, or even if that's old, we will be replacing all the things with the high energy efficient ones. There are specific cinema equipments like lamp projector versus laser projector. So laser projectors are a little expensive, but they are really, you don't need to replace the lamp. They consume less electricity. We will make sure that we put that state of thought laser projectors into the building. We will also do an energy savings audit and make sure that recommendations are added, including most of our other theaters. That's the first thing that we do. And convert the buildings into LED because we get a lot of rebates and bags, so that's no brainers. We, we'll be doing that as well. In terms of transportation, we are going to definitely put a priority parking for electric vehicles, charging stations for all the electric vehicles. We will be designating parking for the bikers so people can bike to the theater. We also will request work with the town to add public transportation to the theater so they don't really bring their car. They can take a bus and come to the theater or different options too. So we'll be flexible there. In terms of energy efficiency, the LED light fixtures and other upgrades, we will also be using a cloud based point of sale systems. So that doesn't need a servers locally posted. So we are very good with our IT work as well. We, we have our own software which is cloud based. So that reduces the energy use in the building too. We will install the new wall panels, as you were saying, while remediating the mold issue, we will make sure that all the wall panels are also installed newly. Any plumbing fixtures, the bathroom renovation, we'll make sure that the water wastage is eliminated, the sewage, sewage is also controlled. In addition to all the things, we will also be, as we pointed out, we will not be, we'll keep the open space as it, as it is. We are not planning to increase the open space. So it preserves the open space and any environmental pollution because we are not doing much construction there. We also, again, this, this option preserves the only Westboro movie theater that the team has. You want to give one small story, there we are printing something in the staple as they come this way. And he saw the board Apple Cinemas and the staple guy is like so excited and he said, let, you don't need to pay for this. So that's the level of thing that the community is expecting for a movie theater. So we will, we are very cognizant of reducing paper wastage and saving trees. So we, all our locations, we use the digital receipts instead of the paper receipts. We will be using the handrailers, electric handrailers instead of the papers in the restaurants as well. We will work with town to host, but there is no better place to host a fundraisers or awareness program with a free movie. You can call that a, the town can advertise. And there is a lot of advertising space for four hundred thousand people in the town. So then we can work with, partner with you guys and do the TV ads, the videos or whatever that we can work, work together with the town.
Jagan, can I quickly add one? So with that particular program alone, whatever the town is planning to reach out to the community, we get close to four thousand customers per, four hundred thousand customers per year. So it, it cannot be any better than this. We, we can have a dedicated space in the lobby, you know, educating the town people and giving, you know, talking about various incentives the town is offering for the green program and everything. So it cannot get any better than, you know, to bring this idea to everybody in, within the town.
The last is our initial design of how we, we think the bar and the lobby will look like. It will be much better than this too, but this is our initial rendering of what we are planning to do. Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Patrick, do you want to start it up, start us off?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. First of all, thank you very much for the presentation and certainly the work and putting together that presentation. You've answered a few of my questions, but I just still want to go through them. So the first question is, will Lax Apple leverage new state specialized energy code, which is inclusive of heat pumps, EV stations, solar and other means? And I'll just elaborate on a little bit. Much of what you described is already part of the state stretched energy code. The state has just released a new energy code called the specialized energy code, which goes a little bit further than, than what's currently out there. So we're really looking for businesses to adopt the most recent energy code.
Yes, we are absolutely planning to adapt to it. We, we'll have to look into the town's program and we'll definitely, in all possible way, we'll participate and we'll adapt to the new energy code. We, it, it actually helps us in the long run. So it's not something we wanted to do it for the town. It's just, even for us, it helps us in the long run.
Sure, okay. And then you, you mentioned, I think, you know, a hundred percent green energy. That's fantastic. But it sounds like you would take advantage of the Westboro Power Choice to, to, to participate in a hundred percent green energy?
Yes, that, that would be the idea. We have actually already started looking into it. We have already started researching that. So if, if we get this one. it, we have already started researching that, so if if we get this one, we definitely keep it looking.
You have a unique clientele, a lot of children and folks that might want to walk or bike to your, you know, using green transportation to a movie theater. If you're not familiar with it, the Route Nine overpass over one thirty-five or Milk Street, it's an old bridge and there is no public sidewalk through there, which makes it very difficult for for residents to get from that side of town over to the area where the movie theater would be. Would you, would you support, you know, being a partner with the state in regards to, you know, creating a green transportation as this, you know, underneath that overpass?
Yes, actually, last time when we won the bid to put a movie theater there, this was something we were very excited about and we really wanted to keep it like that because that's one of the beautiful parts we have seen, so we'll definitely be participating with that.
And then I guess I just have one other question in relation specific to your business. In my limited research on green technologies and movie theaters, and and I could be totally way off base on this, so I apologize if that's the case, my understanding is while laser projectors are certainly far more efficient than traditional bulb projectors and certainly, I believe all of the movie companies now are only producing digital media moving forward, my understanding is that LED screens are actually even more effective or more, I'll say more green than LED laser projectors. Have you considered looking at LED screening?
So we have absolutely considered looking LED screens, the only thing as of now is just the cost of LED screens. To put a, I'll give you an example, to put a sixty feet screen using LED, it would cost us close to half a million dollar versus
Just one screen.
Just one screen versus eight hundred, eighty thousand dollars for an LED screen, a laser projector. So that, and the technology is very, very immature, Samsung tried that technology, they weren't very successful with it because what happens is some of the LEDs burns out, if a middle of a, middle of a screen, if four or five LED burns out during a movie, it becomes very difficult to go change that. So that technology is there, it's upcoming, we are definitely keeping an eye on that, in fact, we wanted to use that technology for smaller screens where they, at the maximum they go up to thirty-five feet now, that's the maximum they can go, our smaller screen is thirty-five feet. So we are definitely keeping an eye on that technology and as and when it matures and it becomes more, you know, within, you know, affordable or if it is like, you know, it doesn't break in middle of a movie and things like that, we'll definitely adapt to it.
Thank you, you've educated me, I didn't, I didn't know that there was such a huge cost difference there, but thank you for considering that and also all the other green initiatives that we've discussed.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks Patrick, Shelby.
Yes, thank you, so curious to know if your proposal or how you've calculated the offset to town services in your proposal.
Sorry, I had a minute.
Can you come again?
So based on the type of services that will be utilized and as it relates to the town, how your proposal price reflects the use of those services, so whether it be water, sewer, et cetera.
Police, fire.
Police, fire, thank you.
Schools.
Yes. So how does your price reflect the the offset of bringing your business here and building it and and offsetting that?
So while we bring in lot of crowd, actually, we do bring in, they're they're, they don't leave here, so they are not going to use these facilities permanently, it is only for few hours that they are going to be using it. And the way we are going to offset some of those costs is, they not, we are bringing in more people, we are, a lot of companies pay, lot of money to, for people to see something, come bring in thing, so they are going to be using all the nearby shops, all the facilities and everything, and the revenue is definitely going, like Jagan mentioned before, it's going to be at least eight to ten million dollars more than what it is now. So we are going to bring in additional revenues in different formats and shapes to offset. I don't think, and based on where we have calculated, like for example, instead of hundred apartments versus a movie theater, our cost of using the sewage or water or, it's going to be way less than that. So it's not going to be like hugely demanding, but it will be, there will be some amount of consumption, but I think we can compensate fairly for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, so it looked like you have roughly a dozen locations now, you mentioned you've rehabilitated four locations, I think you said, four or five? I don't know if you could pass us the addresses of those specific locations that you've, you've actually fully rehabbed?
Sure.
Which maybe, yeah, that would be great.
The one that we opened this year is in the Rhode Island Warwick, we invite the town or anyone to do a visit, we can definitely gladly tour you guys on what we did in these locations.
Was that, was that a rehab project or the one in Warwick?
So it was kind of a rehab project because when we took over the lease, the previous tenant showcase completely destroyed that building, it was worse than this building actually. So they completely removed everything and it was almost reduced to a bare bone, so it was a complete rehab that we had, we did, actually, it was, it is, it was in a bad shape than the best, but the this theater, the only problem is the mold, rest of the things is pretty solid here. They, that was the real rehab, we we have to redo everything from the beginning, we just had a four wall.
Yeah, it's a good thing Regal removed the seats and other things that comes with it, whereas we went in there, the seat is there, the bottom portion is not there in other theaters, so we got lot more work than what we are anticipating to do here.
And that, you said that was Warwick, Rhode Island?
Warwick, Rhode Island?
Yeah.
And we, we are doing a renovation in New Hampshire and Maine as well, so we can definitely give you the address and tour you guys if needed.
Thank you very much, that's it for me.
Thanks.
I have nothing, you answered the question I had before, but had you seen the property you have, you've talked about the mold and, so I appreciate that.
My questions have been asked and answered, thank you.
Okay, anybody else, anything more? Patrick? You all set?
All set, thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and then final on our agenda is Pulte Homes of New England, welcome.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm doing great, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
It's great to be here, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Mark Mastriani, I'm here representing Pulte Homes of New England, I'm the director of planning and entitlement for our, for Pulte Homes of New England. And here with me tonight are other members of my team, we have Mike Travellini, who's the land acquisition manager, and also Essek Petry, who is, helps me with planning and entitlements, so he's our land manager in the, in the Pulte Homes of New England office. Mike and Essek were essential in preparing the proposal we're presenting to you tonight. We're really excited to be here, thank you for your time, we know you've heard two excellent presentations before us, it's actually really, you have three very unique and different proposals before you to decide between, all very positive proposals, very beneficial for the town, so hopefully we'll be able to, to present our proposal to you tonight just as successfully as the the prior applicants did. So as I mentioned, yeah, we're with Pulte Homes of New England. Pulte Homes of New England is a local division of the Pulte Group, which is a large publicly traded home builder, we're based out of Atlanta, there's twenty-six other divisions across the United States, very financially solvent, financially stable with fourteen billion dollars in, it's actually one, it's fourteen billion dollars in cash. Pulte Homes of New England entered the New England market in nineteen ninety-four, and since then, we've been acquiring, permitting, developing and and building a local residential housing projects throughout New England, and we've closed about eighty-one hundred homes since nineteen ninety-four. We have extensive local experience of building sustainable multifamily communities in a mixed use environment, like here at the former Regal Cinema property. Some of the examples that we have on the slides before you today is Westwood Place, that's in Western Westwood, Mass, that's at the University of Station project, that was one hundred multifamily housing units. And then to your top right is a project we call Martin's Landing, that's a five hundred and two unit residential condominium development in North Reading. And certainly, I I know you're all familiar, the bottom picture there is Del Webb Chauncey Lake, that's over on Lyman Street, and that's in, obviously, in Westboro, and that's a partnership that we formed with 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 you all, with the town, we acquired that from from you a couple of years ago, we partnered with you, we successfully worked with your, your local town boards to to obtain all the permits and and acquire the property and begin construction. And if you go out there now, today, we're about a third of the way through the project, we believe we have an excellent relationship with all of your, with the building inspector and all of your town boards, we're really pleased with the way construction has progressed and it's been, it's been a great partnership for us and hopefully the town feels the same way. And then one other thing important to mention is, Pulte Homes of New England, we're self-financed, we don't rely on any financing, we don't rely on any third party debt, and we would, we would purchase and develop this project with our own funds, and I think that's especially important, you know, it's been a really great economy here for the last decade or so, we might be entering into some uncertain or different times, but we're very confident in our financial stability to be able to acquire and and purchase this project from the town and be able to to construct it and complete it successfully. I know you're all familiar with the existing site, it's been discussed today, but you know, if you go out there tonight, if you go out there today, you know, there's the the former Regal Cinema, it's very, very inefficient outdated structure in in disrepair with extensive damage, mold, you know, water intrusion, all been discussed tonight, utilizes, you know, natural gas, very inefficient building. The property is very unkept, there's extensive damage, pavement damage, curving damage, you know, the landscaping is 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 not maintained to a certain level, and that's really, you know, these are challenges with the site, and that's really, I think, impacting the local businesses in the in the immediate area. The site really needs a full makeover to to be viable and to attract new activity and to really support the existing businesses that are there. So, you know, those are the existing conditions, but the good news is, you know, we see tremendous opportunity for the site, you know, it's in a great location, you know, it's in Westboro, you know, we all know Westboro is an A community, a great community to partner with and to do business in. The the project site has immediate access to, you know, to Route Nine, but you know, more importantly, it has, you know, major access, two-way access to a signalized intersection on one thirty-five Milk Street, which which we would intend to use as our, as our major access. The site is surrounded by beautiful tranquil wetlands, you know, open space, has direct access to the charm bracelet, you know, trail system, you know, right now it's being underutilized it, it looks like on the site, but certainly with our proposal, you know, it would, we would, we would bring in new users who would really, really take advantage of that, you know, open space trail network that's there today. We we see tremendous opportunity for a mixed use development, that's what we're proposing, we're proposing housing, I'll get into that on the next slide, but you know, the neighboring uses, the pizzeria uno, the red heat restaurant, the karate place, there's a spa there, you know, we see these neighboring uses, you know, really benefiting greatly from, from mixed use community and some, some new neighbors and new residents that really could induce new activity to those businesses and the surrounding businesses that are in the area. You know, this site is smart growth at its best, this is a underdeveloped site, underutilized site, and it has existing infrastructure, you know, access, sewer, water, utilities, it has incredible infrastructure to support a new residential housing development, which is, you know, great smart, smart growth. We're really excited to partner with Westboro, partner with Westboro again, continue our partnership on a, on a new endeavor and work with the town to 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 redevelop this, this project. So our, our proposal is for a one hundred and eight unit for sale housing residential condominium development. These are for sale homes, it's, it's not a rental community, it would be developed under a condominium format. We're proposing three, three-story low-rise residential buildings with surface parking. We've, we've laid out these buildings in a, in a sensitive manner, utilizing the existing disturbed areas, impervious paved areas that are there today. Our plan is to preserve all of the open space and the wetlands and the beautiful, beautiful natural environment that exists there today. We intend to utilize access out to Milk Street for the primary, you know, in and out entrance access and also there's, and maintain the existing access onto Route Nine, of course. Our, our proposal intends to connect to the town water and sewer, we are aware that the, the town has a sewer moratorium on multifamily housing, but our research and our understanding is that the town is in process and of updating the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan, and you know, and that study should be complete sometime next year, at that time sewer allocation may be available for, for multifamily housing and a development such as this. In our proposal, we gave two different options to the town, so under, under the zoning that we intend to use, under the highway business zoning, there's a requirement for twenty percent affordable units, with the, with the option to, that the planning board can reduce down to ten percent with some discussion and optional mitigation or, you know, benefit to the town to support affordable housing. So we wanted to, we wanted to give the town two different options to see, you know, what the town might prefer, so our price proposal option number one is seven million nine hundred and forty-two thousand, almost eight million dollars, and that's if, and that provides some extra money if if reducing down to ten percent is in the best interest of the town for affordable housing. Price proposal two is six million five hundred thousand dollars, and that's accounting for a twenty percent of the, of the units to be affordable. Those affordable units are compliant with the DHCD program, the LIP program, and would be counted on, on your town subsidized housing inventory. We believe our proposal supports and enhances the, your town's climate action plan, some of the primary goals in the action plan were clean energy sourced electricity, building electric, electrification, transportation electrification and energy efficiency, and some of the secondary goals were protection and expansion of the natural environment, waste management and bike and pedestrian, and you know, we reviewed those plans and when we put together our proposal And, you know, we reviewed those plans, and when we put together our proposal, we considered those, and we really think our proposal helps the town achieve those goals. First and foremost, the, the proposed buildings that we're proposing are, propose as all-electric buildings. So no fossil fuels, no natural gas, no propane, all-electric, an electrified building with electric heat pumps and electric hot water heaters. Our, our proposed buildings will be extremely energy efficient. We use many Energy Star initiatives, just to name a few. We provided a list here for you all, but, you know, well-insulated buildings, two-by-six framing, really, really a lot of high insulation, HVAC duct air sealing package, you know, LED lighting, energy-saving smart thermostats, and all buildings at the end are modeled and tested by a third-party energy raider. And then the last is the Westboro Power Choice. So we looked at this, and we, so our, these are home ownership units, so they're not rental units. And so, it's, it's hard for us to commit for our homeowners, our future homeowners, to be able to, to mandate that they can, that they opt into your, your Westboro Power Choice program. But certainly, as a condominium, we have the ability to market to our homeowners, and we have the ability to encourage our residents to participate in the Westboro Power Choice. And we would certainly, we would certainly do that. Some of the other goals of the Climate Action Plan, you know, electric vehicle charging stations. So we're proposing electric vehicle charging stations for each of the buildings. Bike and pedestrian, pedestrian connectivity with the area uses. Again, the, you know, the restaurants that are there, the spa that is there, certainly, we would connect to those, to those uses. We're really excited about the Westboro Charm Bracelet Trails. You know, right now, they're really being underutilized. We really, really are excited to be able to have that trail system for future residents of the community. Certainly, we provide bike parking for all of the, for all of the new homes as well, new buildings. Protection of the natural environment, you know, our site plan, plan is very respectful of the, the open space and the wetland areas that are there, and staying within the impervious disturbed areas of the site. Our new stormwater management system that would be designed for the new, new project would incorporate low-impact development, best management practices, certainly improvement over what's there today. And our building program would include recycling facilities for each, for each of the buildings and, which would reduce the, the waste into the landfills. So why Polty? You know, why our proposal? Just to recap, you know, we're proposing, we've committed to electrifying our very energy-efficient buildings. We think our residential development is a perfect opportunity to, to foster, to promote a mixed-use development with the existing businesses that are there and reinvigorate and support those surround, those surrounding businesses. We think our proposal provides unmatched financial benefits to the town. Our proposal respects and preserves the natural environment of the, of the site, connects to the, connects and enhances the Westboro Charm Bracelet Trail System. And, you know, and again, you know, we are Polty Homes, very financially solvent, self-financed, and don't, we don't rely on any other financing, you know, third-party debt, which would really reduce the rest of the town moving forward. So with that, I just wanted to thank you all again for the opportunity to present our proposal. We're really excited to be here tonight and have this opportunity to work with the, with the town again. And we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you very much. Patrick, as before, I'll start with you with questions.
All right. Thank you again for your presentation. It was great to see some additional information there. You did answer a couple of my questions, but I'll try to rephrase these to get to a little more depth here. So, as I mentioned earlier, the state is, has adopted a new specialized energy code, which is very aggressive. I saw that you are planning to commit to support Westboro Power Choice and, and communicate that to the residents that would be in your, your facility. But is, as you build out these buildings, will Polty look to leverage the new state specialized energy code?
Yeah, hi Patrick. That's a great question. You know, I, you know, I honestly would hate to overcommit to you because I'm, I'm not familiar with what's coming in the new energy code. I know right now, you know, we, we meet the energy code by building Energy Star Homes three point one. And, you know, our, our buildings are, are extremely energy efficient today. And, you know, and every day, you know, we're always looking to, to make them more, more efficient. You know, in this proposal, we've committed to, to doing, you know, all-electric heat pumps. And so, I, I'm not entirely familiar with the new energy code that you're, that you're mentioning, but we're certainly open to learning more about it and, and seeing if we can comply with it and certainly, you know, seeing what, you know, aspects of it we can, you know, incorporate into our designs.
Okay, thank you. And then you mentioned some of the green transportation that you're, that you're supporting. Would it be safe to assume that, that you'll partner with us in regards to lobbying the state for supporting a more safe transportation through the one-thirty-five Route Nine overpasses to get to the northern part of town where this project would be located?
Yeah, I, I think it's safe to say that we're certainly open to working with the town, absolutely partnering with the town. You know, I would need, you know, we would need to learn more about the overpass and the condition of it and, and, you know, what it would take to, to do that, that pedestrian path. But we're certainly open to looking at that and working with the town. And, you know, one of the things, when I heard you ask that question earlier was, you know, that I thought of right away was, you know, how could we, you maybe approach Mass Works and see if we could, you know, find a way to, to get some Mass Works funding to do a pedestrian path sidewalk like that in order to, to facilitate that.
Yeah, that's exactly the type of partnership we're hoping to, to build here. So, thank you. Ian, if I may, I just had a couple more specific questions about the presentation.
Sure, go ahead.
So you mentioned the ten percent and twenty percent. Is that proposal in perpetuity?
Affordable housing.
The affordable housing?
The affordable housing is in perpetuity. Yes, I believe so. I mean, so the affordable housing fully complies with the DHCD program, and I believe the, the deed riders and the regulatory agreement, you know, those, they constitute in perpetuity. I don't, I don't know if there's a sunset on them, but I know that they're, they're standard and they're approved by the state, and they effectively are in perpetuity.
Okay. And you mentioned your expectations around the sewer capacity. If by chance the sewer capacity cannot be expanded, how would that impact your proposal?
Yeah, I think that, you know, I think that would have a great impact on our proposal. So, you know, our, our understanding and our research is that the, the existing former Regal Cinema was utilizing about twelve thousand gallons per day. And our, our residential proposal is just over twenty thousand gallons per day, or, you know, just shy of twenty-one thousand gallons per day. So, we're, you know, this project and our proposal need an allocation of just under nine thousand gallons per day of sewer flow. And, you know, we, you know, our understanding is that the, the town's existing comprehensive management plan is, is, is old or outdated, but, you know, twenty years old, and it, it does need to be updated. It is in the process of being updated. And, you know, our proposal, you know, accounts for that allocation to be available, you know, when the comprehensive management plan is, is updated and finalized and would be able to allocate flow to our, to our project.
Okay. And then finally, just one quick question back on sustainable topic. You mentioned supplying recycling capabilities at the, at the buildings. Would that be inclusive of black earth composting capability for your residents? I don't know if you're familiar with black earth?
I'm not, I'm not actually.
Okay. One of the big things in our town, topics of discussion across the town is composting. As Westboro produces, as most communities do, a tremendous amount of composting material. And, you know, we're looking at green alternatives across the town, one of which is black earth composting. So just something that I would encourage you to look at, at this facility. That's it, Ian, thank you.
Great, thanks Patrick. Shelby?
Yes, thank you. So, as I've asked the other presenters, have you calculated the offset of town services in your proposal, and if so, how? And if not, why not?
Yeah, hi Shelby.
Hi.
So we, we have, so when we were putting together our proposal, you know, we're estimating that, at full capitalization of the, of the community, it would generate in excess of one million dollars, you know, one million to, to one point one, one point two million dollars in new residential property tax to the town. That, that's, that's, you know, gross, and, you know, in net, certainly, there are some costs to the town associated with our project. One, you know, would be the school kids, I heard you, you ask earlier. You know, we've looked at, we have, we have many other condominium communities similar to this, and we've done other physical studies for other towns. And we estimate this type of community of point one-five students per two-bedroom home. So, under those calculations, projections, we would be projecting about twelve school kids from this, from this community to the, to the Westboro Public School System. And then also, just to try to get some real-life data, what we believe is a similar, you know, comp is, we call the, the Westwood Public School System. You know, there, we, we just recently constructed one hundred condominium garden-style units, very similar to what we're proposing here. You know, Westboro, Westwood is a, is a great community with a great school system, very similar to what you have here in Westboro. And there's, there's seventeen school kids in the Westwood Public School System from our community. So, you know, we're projecting, if you use those numbers, you know, realistically, honestly, you know, twelve to seventeen kids, you know, from this community to the town. And then certainly, there would be some fire and police costs and other, and other town costs. But, you know, all of that would be more than covered by the, by the new annual property tax revenue, more than, more than double in our projections. So, you know, we think this is, we know this is physically, financially positive to the town. In addition to our purchase price, but year over year, it'll be financially positive to the town as well. You know, in reality, this type of housing, for-sale housing as opposed to a rental, you do get some school kids, but you, you don't, you don't get a ton of school kids. It's really not a conducive environment to a, to a lot of school kids. I know that's a concern of, of you all in the, in the town.
Thank you. Ask a clarifying question? Yeah. Or not clarifying, a different question. I'm curious to know what the, what you anticipate the market, average market cost to be for sale for these units? And again, I know we're projecting out some period of time, but if you can give us a sense of that.
Yeah. So, you know, we would, you know, we would use some, we have existing data, because we're, we're obviously building over on Lyman Street at Del Webb Chauncey Lake and have some similar types of, types of units there. So, you know, I would project that we would be some units in the three-hundred thousands and upwards of, you know, in the five-hundred thousands. The, the beauty of our proposal and our, our product choice is that, you know, we have a wide range of, of unit sizes. We have units as small as nine hundred square feet, they go up to fifteen hundred square feet, sixteen hundred square feet. We have one-bedroom choices versus two-bedroom choices. And then certainly, as you, as you go up in floors, you know, there's, there's view premiums, especially with, with the views that we have here at, at this unique site. So, you know, we're able to, to really market to a wide range of buyers at, at different, at different price points.
My questions have been answered, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. A couple of questions from the design. First off, three buildings, and I think we've seen that before. I'm just looking at this page five, it's, I think it's similar to we saw before. Definitely a lot of parking there as well. But what other amenities are there for, would be proposed for residents in terms of outside space, et cetera?
Yeah, great question. You know, so the first amenity is really the existing usage. So I just want to say it again. I mean, there's some amazing restaurants there, you know, spa there, and hopefully some other users that come into, to that site. We think that's an incredible amenity to, to our homeowners. Another amenity that we intend to market and really take full advantage of is the existing trail system that's there. That, that is a real nice trail system. Our homeowners would greatly benefit from getting out and using the trail system and passive recreation. In addition to that, we would have outdoor seating areas, you know, throughout our community. And that, you know, we find that, you know, our homeowners like to get out, enjoy the fresh air, you know, walk, passive recreation, and then a place to, to sit and gather. And, you know, that's, so we haven't designed that into the plan yet, but we certainly as the, if we, if we were to move this project forward and, and work on, you know, updating the design, we would incorporate outdoor seating areas into the, into the, into the design.
Great, thank you. And the second question was just related to the comments about the use as a primary entrance and exit, the one-thirty-five, kind of the same page, I look at the design. I believe from the uniqueness of this property with the other owners there, assuming that access, I guess, through your property to those is not restricted in any means, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. We certainly intend to maintain the access out to Milk, Milk Street and to Route Nine, and certainly work with the, the existing abutting users to maintain their access to both Milk Street and Route Nine as well.
Perfect, thank you.
A couple of questions. Looking at your site plan, building number three, the building that runs north-south, and its parking currently overlays a part of the parking lot that's been mutually used between, was formerly mutually used between the cinema and the strip mall. Do you foresee any problems managing parking and having parking conflicts between patrons of the businesses and residents?
No, I don't. So we've spoken to the, to the owner of that strip, the strip mall. We fully expect to be able to work out an agreement with him with a shared parking arrangement. There's plenty of parking there for, for both units, both uses to co-mingle. It actually is a perfect, you know, uses, you could actually share the uses, because when the, when they, when they need the parking, you know, our residents don't need the parking, and when our residents need the parking, you know, they, they don't. So, there's a perfect opportunity to share parking there. But, you know, regardless, there's enough parking for both them and us, you know, on their own as well.
Another question, if I read your RFP response correctly, your preference is to not close on the property until you've secured all of your permits?
Yeah.
And that includes, so I assume includes...
And that includes sewer, I assume includes the sewer allocation?
Yeah, that is true. So, you know, our, our proposal intends to make a significant financial contribution to the town. You know, our acquisition price is a significant investment that we're proposing to make to the community, and, you know, and, and what we ask for in return is the opportunity to, to secure all of the permits that allow the construction of the proposal that we're, that we're presenting. And that's, that's pretty consistent and similar to what we did at the former Westboro State Hospital. You know, we were awarded that project under a similar process to this. It was contingent upon obtaining, you know, the necessary permits and approvals for that project. And, you know, we're, we're prepared to proceed with those permits and approvals, you know, very quickly, and, and go through the proper process with the local boards, the planning board, and the conservation commission. And, and, and once those, those approvals are obtained, we would proceed, you know, to a closing, and, you know, we, we see that happening in a, in a pretty efficient manner.
I guess my concern with that is, should the sewer allocation not become available or other permitting issues come to play? The town has a carrying cost on this property that's hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. And at that point, 12, 18, 24 months from now, we could be, you could decide not to move forward with the project, and we'd be back where we are today, going back out to bid to find another buyer. So I guess I'm a little concerned about that risk to the town. I'm not sure that was a question, but an observation. And then, I, I guess I would ask a reevaluation of the expectation of the number of kids. We've had other condominium projects in this town where the number of students living in the units is two, three, four times what was estimated. And in one instance triggered the expansion of schools, millions of dollars in construction and renovation. So I'd be interested in seeing more detail about.
Sure.
Impact on.
And we, we would love the opportunity to provide more detail. And we have, you know, lots of these communities, we do not see a lot of kids in, in this type of building, this type of community, and so we have both Imperial data from physical consultants that we've used, that are well-known, you know, experts in the field, and then we also have, you know, real-life experience at some of our other communities. And we just don't see, see that, those types of kid numbers, and it might be the difference between a rental and a homeownership, I'm not sure if that matters for what you're comparing it to, but under a homeownership type of format, it's, you know, in our experience, it's not conducive to, to a lot of kids.
Thanks. Okay. Shelby, you?
I do, yeah. Is it, in the condo agreement that Pulte creates, is, can owners rent their units?
They can. They, you know, so we, we try to leave it open because these are home, these are, these are residents who are purchasing their home, just, just the way all other residents of Westboro purchase their homes, and, you know, so we, we like to leave the opportunity open for them to rent them. You know, however, we don't see a lot of rentals in, in our projects, in our communities, and if they do rent, you know, we require that the lease be at least of one year in length. And that sort of, you know, that, that alleviates any concerns with, you know, VRBO or Airbnb and things like that.
Thank you. One more question. He elaborated a little bit more on traffic anticipated, so 108 units, I assume everyone has at least one vehicle, so can you talk a little bit more, while I know you might, you have not undertaken a full traffic study, I understand, I would assume you would, you would have to as part of the planning process, but?
Yeah, that was our expectation. So we did reach out to our traffic consultant that we use a lot, his name's Bob Micho, he's with MDM Transportation, a very respected transportation engineer in the field in this area. I think he's also done a lot of business in, in the town of Westboro, well-known. You know, and we, we talked, you know, we spoke to him about our proposal, you know, and he, you know, he assessed it, we're, we believe we'll be using less, we'll have less trips, less traffic than the previous use. And, you know, more importantly, we believe that the, the intersections that are there are capable of handling our, our trips. And certainly the, the, the manner in which the trips are, are undertaken is a lot more predictable than like a movie theater and where they, you know, they exit all at the same time. So, you know, our, our trips will be predictable, and we think that there'll be less than the, than the existing use that was there and that the intersections are, are capable of handling it. We, as you mentioned, we did fully expect to submit a traffic study to the planning board as part of our special permit application that we would need to proceed with.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Patrick or anybody else on the board?
I'm good.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
All three of our respondents to RFP, appreciate. You're coming here tonight on a rainy night, doesn't feel like, we need the rain, but doesn't feel like the rest of the summer has been. So that kind of concludes that piece to it for this evening.
Can I just, sorry, can I just ask each of the bidders to send us, to send me an electronic copy of the presentation that you gave tonight? Thank you.
Thanks. I get to steal my thunder on another thing, but I think, just kind of going through, just for the, the, the bidders, but also the public, a kind of next steps here. Kristi, I believe our next step is from here, for each of us as board members, to kind of independently review the proposals, both the written ones we've seen and tonight's proposals, and independently kind of rate each of those based on the criteria that were set forth in the RFP.
Correct, yep.
Deliver those in, those will be compiled by you and your office, and then next steps from there will be reviewing that and then the awarding of that coming up fairly soon. But remind me again of our timing if there is some, just again for public and for also the.
I think, you know, assuming that the board is ready, we would hope to, to make a decision in the next couple of meetings, so.
Awesome. So with that, any questions from, kind of should have asked that before, but I think you're all here, any questions back from the bidders? Trying to give you a idea, we want to move forward quickly on this, it's been sitting vacant for way too long, and we went through the laborious process, I guess twice, in terms of an attempted eminent domain, but then also the, the process, the more short process of going through land court. So it's in our interest as a board and interest of the town to move this forward as expeditiously as possible. So I guess our word to you is that we're gonna, we're gonna move on this quickly, as quickly as we can to make that decision and let folks know, we can let you know the, when we'll be putting on the agenda for final decision in open meeting.
And the only thing I would say, I think a couple of presenters are going to follow-up with a couple items back to the board, so just a reminder to that, thanks.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Oh, yeah. I was gonna say, Jake on has it, yeah, sure, no problem.
Should we submit the follow-up information directly?
Yes, directly.
Yeah, you have to, Kristi, that'd be the best way to do it, thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
Okay. Moving forward with our agenda this evening, item three, which was a vote to execute the purchase and sale agreement for Zero Raglo Street, we're going to pass over that this evening, and this will be put on our next agenda for a week from today. And then the final piece in open session here is to, is a request to approve meeting minutes, and I will entertain motions for three sets of minutes.
I move, we approve the meeting minutes for June 28th, 2022, July 19th, 2022, and August 2nd, 2022, as presented.
Second. Moving seconded, are there any comments, corrections on any of those? Okay, seeing I know the remote will do, I think we gotta do.
Is Patrick still with us?
Roll call.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, just checking.
Can't see him.
Sorry.
I believe it's roll call because we're remote, is that correct?
Yeah, because Patrick's remote, yep.
Patrick Welch.
Well, yes.
Penneberg, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Kio, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Okay, thank you, those are passed five to zero, five being present. Thank you as always, Sheila, for putting those together. Anything else for open session this evening?
Thank you, Westboro TV.
As always.
As always, thank you, Westboro TV, and Karen Henderson, who is running it for us this evening, appreciate that. I will opt by one minute, I apologize for that, it's supposed to be 8:15, I looked at 8:16, but a motion to, for executive session.
Yeah, I move, we move to executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to act under the authority of the select board to approve executive session minutes of January 20th, February 8th, March 19th, June 28th, July 19th, and August 2nd, all of 2022.
And I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the board's position. We will not be reconvening in an open session after we go through those items. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, roll call, vote, Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Penneberg, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Kio, yes.
Marshall, yes.
It's five to zero, five being present, we are now out of open session into executive session.